It is now three o'clock, it's time for the DeSoto County School Board to come in order. Let's stand please and say the pledge. At this time, it's time for us to approve the agenda, and we need to remove F, G, and I from the new business.
First of all, Madam President, I'd like to make it one aware, the reason we are eliminating F, G, and I from new businesses is because all those revisions to our board policy were contingent upon today's Mississippi School of Education meeting in Jackson, those items were not addressed today by them, we had those on there anticipating they weren't going to be addressed, and we would revise our policies to take on all those, and obviously strike those from the agenda, but I don't want to give everybody the reason why. So, with that being said, Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the agenda, with the exception of F, G, and I in new business.
I have a recommendation to approve agenda with a removal of F, G, and I from new business, do I have this in a motion? Do I have a second? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, aye, so the motion pass. Approval of minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Student, uh, students. Superintendent's report. I have not been drinking, I assure you.
All right. On that note, all right, Madam President, I've got one item for executive session, I have an early graduation request, just one, is that correct, Mr. Spencer, one early graduation request, that's for executive session. I do want to mention that USU's World Report issued their, their study, their America's Best High Schools, they do that each year, they recognize 13 high schools in Mississippi, five of those located here in DeSoto County, that was Lewisburg High School, DeSoto Central High School, Olive Branch High School, Center Hill High School, Hernando High School, so for us to have five out of the 13 that they recognized, obviously was quite an accomplishment, we're very proud of those schools, as well as all of our high schools, their teachers, students, and administrators. At this time, we've got two recognitions that we're going to have, we are, in just a few minutes, we'll be recognizing our students from DeSoto, Central, and Lewisburg that made it 30 or higher, those will be all seniors, but first of all, we want to recognize state champions, and I've asked our Director of Athletics for our district, Mr. Andy Jenkins, if he can come forward, we'll recognize these, this team, and several individuals also.
We had a number of students that did very well in the state, in our state track league and the state championship, I'd like to recognize some of those people, we'll start out by recognizing our individual state winners, starting with Olive Branch, head coaches, Coach Evans, assistant coach, Stanford, and assistant coach, Gaspard, I believe they had football practice right now as well as tow, I think their principal is here. We would like to recognize Mr. Fabian Levitt for winning the state in the shot put. Also Ethan Spitt won a long jump at the state league, like recognizing. Next school up is Hernando High School, our coach, Logan Bog. We have this Kayla Cartwright. Kayla won the state in the 800 meter run, the 1600 meter run, and the 3200 meter run, and she was also selected to the 2018 Claywell Red Dogs state team. South Haverford, South Haven High School, Coach back coach, Keith Dudley. This four by one hundred meter relay team took first place instead of new class 6A state record, and the four by one hundred. Those individual's are Everly Stevenson, Aleah Lacy, Chevy Harper, and Kelly Williams Bay. The next girl is Center Hill High School, we'd like to recognize their coach, Coach Kayla Auburn. Kayla Coleman won the 5A girls tennis tennis state championship, she's come forward. Stanwood Center Hill High School, Coach Downs, head coach, Coach Epstein, assistant, Coach Hall, would you come forward please? Coach Downs, this staff has two girls to win individual state titles and a relay team to win a state title, and a girl to win the overall state championship. At this time, we would like to recognize Ms. Cameron McClellan, she's senior. Cameron won four events, the 100 meter hurdles, the 300 meter hurdles, the long jump, and the triple jump, she has won a triple jump four consecutive years, she has won back-to-back 100 meter hurdles titles, she was also named for the 2018 Claywell Dogs state team. Our next state champion is Jemaya Graham, she won the 5A state championship. Like I said earlier, four by one hundred meter relay team won the state in the time of 89-23, Kaylin Johnson, Jada Crutchfield, Faith Williams, and Kaylin Johnson. At this time, we would turn it over to Coach Downs to let him talk about the overall state championship.
I'd like to first of all thank our board directors, and Ms. Dolly, and everybody up there, thank y'all so much for your support of Center Hill Track and Field, the girls won, I think the score was 126 points to 84, which is Hattiesburg, last year we were in fourth place with 70 points, but we had everybody returning, so it was just an honor for the kids to go down there and do, that we did a great job, our four by eight started us off that day, we're getting second place, then we went one, two in the pole vault, and we went one, three in the long jump, and then, then we just kind of started, we went one, five in the hurdles, 100 hurdles, and then we had kids getting, you know, one point in the 300 meter hurdles, we just had the kids across the board did just a phenomenal job, we had, the only two events that we'd have anything in was the the 400 and the shot put and discus, so we had three girls, we won, the only schools that had three girls in the pole vault, so we went one, two in the pole vault, and we had a girl placed fifth, freshman young lady that did a wonderful job, we had another freshman that scored some points in the, we won the 300 hurdles, and then we were like eighth, so we scored 11 points in that, so that just kind of happened all day, we had a lot of juniors and seniors that just contributed a lot, we only had two freshman girls that went down there, we had a young lady on the four by four, and of course, a young lady in the pole vault, the rest of them were juniors and seniors, we've had two girls that we moved up in the eighth grade to, to come up to the high school five years ago, and that was Nia Odom and Karen McClellan, Karen's won the triple jump three, four years in a row, she won back-to-back 100 meter hurdle titles, and then of course, she won all four events down in state league, but it was just wonderful to see our kids represent not only Center Field, but DeSoto County as a whole, they did a phenomenal job, just the whole year, they won district regions, North State, and they won them by a lot of points, they also won the DeSoto County championships, so it was just phenomenal to watch them, is that, if I guess that was Yeah, 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 I'd like to call all the rest of the ladies up, Landon Bellows, Jada Crutchfield's already up here, one up here, Landon. Jasmine Crutchfield. Jaden. Jasmine. Valerie Daley, Valerie Daley. We had two girls in the 100 meter hurdles, two girls in the 300 meter hurdles, Jessica Gibson, she was our runner-up in the pole vault. Jemaya Graham, our pole vault champion. Bobby Johnson, Bobby won our second place four by eight, and she was also in the two mile. Kaylin Johnson, she was on our four by one, then one, our four by two, that got third, she was in the 200 meter tag, she got fifth, and then she was runner-up in the 200 for the second year in a row. Kyle Johnson, she got out of the pole vault. Adriana Love, she was on our four by four. Chana Lee, she was on the four by eight, we got second, and she also was in the 800 meters to score some points. Karen McClellan. Cameron is also up for female after the year, preparing later, we'll go down and juke for that. Sarah Miller, she was on our four by eight. Nia Odom, four by four and four by two, she's also on our eighth grade, we moved up five years ago. Abigail Penfield, she was in the mile, and four by eight. Jasmine Riley, 300 meter hurdles. Cameron Terrell. Cameron also got third in the high jump. Kennedy Weber, Kennedy was on our four by two and four by four. And Faith Williams, on our four by eight. This is your Center Hill High School, five A.
I know we're having to back up a little bit, but I do want to recognize Mr. Fabian Levitt, that time we hit the hollow, that shot's good, if you can stand away, be ready.
Do that, right. All right, at this time, in kind of going in between the two, we, we will look here and our ACT, our seniors with 30-plus, before we're gonna do that, we're gonna have the DeSoto Central High School softball team here to recognize them for their state championship, but they're in Jackson supporting the DeSoto Central High School baseball team, who's playing seven o'clock tonight, so we'll delay that until other day, and we'll see where I'm going with this, and a lot of our seniors from DeSoto Central and Lewisburg, we're missing some of them that would be over 30-plus, because Lewisburg and DeSoto Central, they're both playing today, so I know we're not gonna have all the students that we're gonna recognize, but the schedule just worked out that way, but we're excited to have the students that we do have here this evening, we are looking forward to recognizing them, these will be the 30-plus seniors from Lewisburg High School, DeSoto Central High School, Ms. Ross, if you could announce the Lewisburg students for us.
Doug Anderson. Jordan Archer. Brianna Baliano. Zach Macy. Maggie Dodd. Mackenzie Dodd. Jacob Fisher. Emily Fleming. Cassidy Gillis.
I want to tell you, Addison had a perfect performance.
Mackenzie Hansen. Cole Hardy. Dylan Hughes. Hunter James. Bailey Jones. Chloe Kern. Kyle Lindsay. Kate Lynn Luke. Morgan Miller. Emily Mitchell. Grace Morgan. Jamie Pack. Mary Ramsey. Kristen Schaefer. Whitney Shepherd. Isabella Smith. Gracie Teals. Zach Tompkins. Andrea Turnbo. Saul Winters. And Grant Wood. Congratulations. And then, yes, Miss Hunter, Miss Dennis, two big contributors to this.
Great job. And Ms. Johnson, from DeSoto Central High School.
Nathan Attaberry. Jack Beerman. Liz Bishop. Jake Camp. Isaac Dias. Kevin Farrell. Cameron Fleet. Jessica Gardner. Jayja Condes. Ben Johnson. Dan Keitner. Serena Lang. Ally Lenar. Just come on out. Come on out. You are from the DeSoto Central High School, come on out. So my next name is Anna Claire Lebric. Casey McMen. Chris Meisel. Silas Nelson. Saul Perettis.
Are they all in the word Louis or the Al?
Amaya Parker. Freya Chindal. Emma Heacock. Emily Pearson. Diane Pham. Abigail Ransom. Kyla Ringo. Raven Gugiro. Skylar Russell. Andrew Shilowit. Reese Cher. Ryan Shaw. Will Stacy. Hannah Stewart. Zoe Stork. Emerson Thomas. Alyssa Donbert.
Glad y'all were here. We'll to once again congratulate all our state champions, congratulate our seniors of thirty plus, and look forward to seeing you at graduation here in just a few days. I want to thank the teachers, the coaches, and administrators over here, all the child experts, and the thanks to the parents who came out today. We appreciate your support of the school and all DeSoto Central High School students. Now, we're about to get to official school board business, so if you would love, like to stay, you're more than welcome to, if not, now you can come.
Madam President, I can put you in my seat.
Attorney Report. This time we'll approve minutes for April the nineteenth, twenty eighteen, and for April eleventh, twenty eighteen, with the special call meeting. Do I have that in the motion? Do I have a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Ayes have it, the motion passed. Consent agenda.
Madam President, I recommend the board approve the consent agenda.
I have a recommendation to approve the consent agenda. Agenda, do I have that in the motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Senior ayes have it, the motion passed. The is. Bank depository, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, approved, and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am, we open bids on May the eleventh for bank depositors. We should have a spreadsheet and a packet with a list of bids and how they were submitted. Based on the bids, we are asking the First Tennessee Bank to serve the depository for our central services bank account, with exception of the child nutrition, the child nutrition department, that asks to remain with a trust mark, due to the convenience of our allies who is engaged in the trust mark application. And then there is a good also depository for the school level activity, and that's at the discretion of the principal. So I'm asking that you accept the bid for that depository for the list of people who are back.
Madam President, I recommend the board approve the bids for bank depository for the work back, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, school year three, two thousand twenty-two.
I have a recommendation to allow First Tennessee Bank to service the depository for the central services bank account, with exception of child nutrition. Do I have this in motion? Make that motion. Do I have a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion passed. Bids for South Parkings Expansion, Hernando High School, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am, the bid was open on May the second for the expansion apartment on Hernando High School. Farrell Paving submitted the lowest bid, my recommendation to approve the project of a bid of Farrell Paving. If this is approved, we'll have a meeting, I think it's next week, to start planning that day to get to work. They told me in the bid that they got this, it'll be done before the school starts, but they hope to be a couple weeks ahead of that.
Madam President, I recommend the board approve Farrell Paving, South Parkings Expansion at Hernando High School.
I have a recommendation to accept the lowest and best bid from Farrell Paving Incorporated for the South Parkings Expansion at Hernando High School, and I have this in motion. Do I have a second? Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion passed. Contractual agreement, Farrell Paving Incorporated, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am, just asking your commission, your commission from the board, that is a contractual agreement for Farrell Paving.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the contractual agreement, Farrell Paving Incorporated.
I have a recommendation to accept the contractual agreement presented by Farrell Paving Incorporated, do I have this in motion? Do I have a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Ayes have it, the motion passed. Make sure I've got the right one. Revised Board, revised Board Policy, GBQA, reemployment after retirement, Ms. Weeks.
Yes, ma'am, we're requesting a revision to this policy. Previously, it stated that you retired from another state and came to our district to work, you were paid for five years' experience, and the revision would allow you to pay for five years' experience upon your first year of employment, which you received an increment for each year after that.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve revised policy, GBQA, reemployment after retirement.
I have a recommendation to approve the revised Board Policy, GBQA, reemployment after retirement, do I have this in motion? Do I have a second? Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Revised, yeah, revised Board Policy, IDFA, intramural, interscholastic athletics, Ms. Weeks.
Yes, ma'am, we have a two-year requirement in this policy. Apparently, it says sixty-three percent, which aligns with our other policy that we recently revised to fifty percent, so we need to revise this one to fifty percent as well, to prevent resistance.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the revised policy, IDFA, interscholastic athletics.
I have a recommendation to approve the revised Board Policy, IDFA, intramural, interscholastic athletics, do I have this in motion? Do I have a second? Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Revised Board Policy, JBA, compulsory school attendance, school age, Ms. Weeks.
Yes, ma'am, we're revising this policy because of a change to Mississippi code. Our policy currently states that a student can enroll in kindergarten and then disenroll from kindergarten and not make compulsory requirements, which is not in line with this UCU policy. The UCU says once a student enrolls in kindergarten, that student must make compulsory school attendance. So we're revising our policy to accommodate this.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the revised Board Policy, JBA, for compulsory school attendance, school age.
I have a recommendation to approve the revised Board Policy, SHB, compulsory school attendance, school age, do I have this in motion? Do I have a second? Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Ayes have it, the motion passed. Personally, Mr. Alexander.
Yes, ma'am, first up, I get this evening, page one through four, recommendations. Page is five, they have a bunch of changes. Page nine is a memo for myself, the new position is security and school resource officer, which will affect the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year. It will provide security for central services, aggressive security concerns issued at the school level also. Page sixteen, the job description for the security, the school resource officer. Page thirteen is a memo for myself, one of the two positions of investigator, they move from two oh five days' work per year back to two thirty days' per year. This two thirty day investigator will continue to provide services in the summer for central services in all school locations, the same position will remain in two oh five position. Page is four, fifty-sixteen is the job description for the investigator, will be two thirty. Most of the note on that is they will investigate residency issues, and will have moral presence in the residence department and central services, and some of our registration takes place in their busy time. Page seventeen is a memo for myself, the board approved a thousand dollar supplement for each certified teacher that is deployed in our magnet program. These are the teachers who work in some pretty tough conditions, situations for the special. Page eighteen is a memo for myself, is to approve a ten percent additional, addition to the hourly rate for each teacher assistant that is deployed for the DeSoto County School Magnet Program. Page nineteen is a memo for myself, this is to approve a new increase of five percent to ten percent of the hourly rate for personal care assistance for the, that we have for the students, personal care assistance for our in-house students, IEP. Page twenty is a request myself, for the security school resource officer for seventeen days, beginning six seventeen and ending six twenty-nine, their regular hourly rate for paying. That would be just July first. Page twenty one is a request myself, on employees will be working on recruitment and resources for teachers to use at the beginning of the school year, each employee will work up to eighty additional hours at the beginning of six one, end of six twenty-nine. Page twenty-two is an additional pay from Ms. Weeks, Assistant Superintendent, on teacher training or teacher assistance for the pre-k classrooms, this is a new requirement by the MBE, that will be a total of eighty hours, and that will be from six eighteen to six twenty-nine, okay, please. Page twenty-three is a list of our pre-kindergarten assistants. Page twenty-four is a request from Mr. Spencer, assessment superintendent, academic services, on teachers who will facilitate summer school students who did not pass their courses in grade three, three, five. They can work a total of eighty-four hours, with six four, six twenty-nine. Page twenty-five is a list of those teachers who work. Page twenty-six is a list of those summer school substitutes. Page twenty-seven is also from Mr. Spencer, on employee who will create new and revise existing ELA benchmark assessment used for middle school data collection, beginning six eleven through six fifteen. Page twenty-eight is also from Mr. Spencer, for interventions that will work in small groups, students during the month of June, interventions will focus on reading with the third grade reading camp, count, and ELA and math with third to fifth grade students who have not completed or failed. That allows me up to eighty-four. Page twenty-nine is a list of those summer school employees. Page thirty is also from Mr. Spencer, on academic services on teachers who will facilitate the jump start summer program for high school students entering grades second and third, they work a total of eighty-four hours, six four or six twenty-nine. Page thirty-one is a list of those employees working the jump start. Page thirty-two is a list of those substitutes. Page thirty-four, I'm sorry, page thirty-three is also from Mr. Spencer, on teachers who will be working on one of two committees, one middle school science, that are middle school special education, each committee will collaborate to create resources for the teachers to use the eighteen, nineteen school year up to thirty hours, beginning July fifth, beginning July twenty-seventh. Page thirty-four is a list of those employees that work on the summer committees. Page thirty-five is additional pay for from Mr. Jerry White, director of planning, maintenance on summer grass cutters, athletic fields, being under supervision of principal high school is allowed, two thousand, two thousand for June and July. Page thirty-six is summer grass cutters for the high school. Page thirty-seven is a request from Mr. White, for Hernando High School, about the range high school, they split those employees. Page thirty-eight is a request from Mr. White, grass cutters for middle school, which is allowed a thousand dollars, five hundred for June, up for July. Page thirty-nine is a list of those grass cutters for middle. Page forty is additional pay for Mr. Lisa Williams, director of transportation, summer transportation workers, they can work up to three hundred and twenty-eight hours, be paid at ten fifty, beginning May twenty ninth, ending July twenty seventh. Page forty-one is a list of those summer transportation workers. Page forty-two, additional pay for Dr. Stephen Stewart, director of academic services, special education teachers, collect level text, to be used to teach EMS, CCR standards in ELA, and modify structural plan assessments to be used throughout the district, thirty hours, beginning July tenth, ending July seventeenth. Page forty-three is a list of the state summer committee workers. Page forty-four is additional pay for Mr. Spencer, again, to some teachers who will facilitate the third grade reading summer camp, for students who run success on the NAAT, ELA assessment, eighty-four hours, June fourth through June twenty-nine. Page forty-five is third grade reading camp, two thousand and workers. Page forty-six are those substitutes. Page forty-seven is from Dr. Stewart again, on ELA teachers who will collect text to be used to teach ERS, CCR standards, develop lessons and assessments, be used throughout the district, thirty hours, July fifth through July seventeen. Page forty-eight is ELA number work committee workers. Page forty-nine, also from Dr. Stewart, on social studies teachers who will develop unit resources to be used to teach the EBS standards, total of thirty hours, from July eleventh through July, page fifty is a list of those social studies committee. Page fifty-one is additional pay from Stephanie Green, our director of EL, on employee who will be an interpreter working in summer, just with registration and preparation for the beginning of the school year, up to two hundred and thirty-two hours, beginning May twenty-fourth, ending July fifth. Page fifty-two is also from this green, on ELLS, ELL, summer in Richmond County, we got at Bozo Elementary School, from eight AM on to noon, beginning July sixteenth and ending July twenty-seventh. Page fifty-three is a list of those employees who work at EL Summer in Richmond County. Page fifty-four is additional pay for Ms. Hassan, our director of special education, working on state ESY, beginning July, coming June first, ending July nineteenth. Page fifty-five through sixty-three is a list of those employees who will work state ESY. Page sixty-four through page one hundred and thirty-six are classified employees recommendations for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, and it's not approved. Page sixty-four through page one hundred and thirty-six are classified employees recommendations for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, and it's up there, approving.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve page one through one hundred and thirty-six, personnel as presented.
I have a recommendation to approve personnel as read from one to one thirty-six. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Mr. Alexander.
Page one thirty-seven is a classified employee recommendation for eighteen, nineteen, Bay Harbor Middle School. Page one thirty-eight is a classified employee recommendation for two employees at central services.
We have the recommendation, please.
Madam Secretary, I want to recommend the board to approve page one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight, as presented.
We have our recommendation, I now need a motion. A second? All in favor say aye. All opposed, netting? And the motion has been approved. Mr. Finley, student discipline.
Madam Chairman, we got two student matters to discuss in executive session.
Student student matters. I need a consideration motion to go into executive session for two student matters and one early graduation. Do I have that in the motion or what? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Before we adjourn to go into the executive session, this will be my last time to be present. We take turns. Forget that. No, we believe Mr. Mr. Chase will come back and show you if he's going to stay in the executive session and if they're going to.